Good morning, everybody. Let's see, are we rolling? Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the September 8, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as usual, it's both in person and over Zoom. And we will start, as always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there -- okay, we're not going to do the approval. We're going to hold that until the 22nd for the approval of the minutes. Selectman Raven has a motion.
A motion, yes. Lauren Raven, I motion that we amend our agenda to include in an item in new business, item six, the ability to reschedule our September 22 board of selectmen meeting to another date.
I second.
Well, is in favor. Fred Camello's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take that up in a few minutes. We'll go right on to the updates. And I'm still a few weeks away from my first eye surgery, so I got to wear my glasses. Trying to hold it off. Okay. For selectmen's updates, I want to salute the Parks and Recreation Department for their good efforts, pulling off fairly a great show Saturday for the fireworks. Lots of people came by and remarked that they liked it better than in July, and it was a little cooler. And I did too, but I know come July, if we say we're not having them in July, there'll be a rebellion. So happy to have that. Yeah, well, I was thinking, maybe, I have to find out if it would cost us more if we did instead of two shows in July, maybe do one at the beach in July, maybe one in Binny on Labor Day. I'll throw that out there for discussion with the public and see what my colleagues think. But I think, you know, if we take it away from July 4, there would be a lot of pushback. But it really was fun, and people did like having it in early September. So, well, more on that, but I think it's a nice problem to have. So more on that soon. I had the pleasure of swearing in on Tuesday, two new officers, Officer Beltran and Frieder. Officer Frieder is a local guy, Boy Scouts, done a lot of work there, great family. And Officer Beltran is from right over the border in Port Chester, so he's basically a local guy, too. So we're really looking forward to working with them in the years to come. Wanted to wish former First Selectman John Morgenau belated birthday. I think John's 94, I believe. Great, great guy, and he's still here in Coscap. So happy birthday, John. I attended an event at Trump National over in Briar Cliff for ABELUS last week. Just a great venue and a wonderful cause, and there was lots of people, mostly from Greenwich, but from other places, too. And they really showed up to support a great cause. So I didn't get a chance to play golf, but it was nice to drive down there and see everybody there. Let's see, we have another couple more ribbon cuttings. Doing a lot of new businesses, which is always a good thing to have in town. Neighbor to Neighbor's ribbon cutting is on September 13 at 3:00. And then followed at 4:00 the same day with CCI's ribbon cutting to St. Rocks Avenue. And we'll also be doing a name change there. So looking forward to that. And then later that night, I'll be at Harvest Time Church for Westchester Airport Panel with Westchester County Executive George Latimer, real good guy. And he agreed to do this forum for us so that people in Greenwich can ask all the questions they have about what they're hearing about the airport's plans for expansion. I don't think it's what people think, but certainly I would leave that up to them just to come there. If you have any questions at all, they'll be there to answer them. So please mark that down in your calendars. There is emergency, an emergency preparedness roundtable at the Senior Center, 9:15, I'm sorry, at 10:00 in the morning. On 9:16, September 16, we have the Mexican flag racing out here in front of Town Hall at 10:00. And later that day, we will do a proclamation again out in front of Town Hall for the children of the daughters of the American Revolution. That will be at 4:00. And then September 17 at 10:00, we have the Coastal Cleanup at Todd's. And then at 11:00 here, back here at Town Hall, for a Constitutional, Constitution Day proclamation. So lots of proclamations, lots of ribbon cutting events going on. So with that, I'll look left and -- good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you, Fred. I will start kind of with a somber note, saying that I am sorry to miss the 9/11 ceremonies coming up this weekend. I will be out of town for a family reunion that has been long delayed because of COVID, but my hearts are with Greenwich on 9/11. And then for a lighter note, I am also looking forward to the International Coastal Cleanup Day. The Greenwich Sustainability Committee will have a table there. It's from 10:00 to 2:00 at Greenwich Point. And, you know, the public, please come by and see us. And Alex is in the audience. Can I announce the ribbon cutting for our Farmer Joe? All right, on Wednesday, September 21 at noon, that's right, in Town Hall, we will be celebrating the little electric robot mower that we affectionately call Farmer Joe. So please come by and see what he's all about. That's it for me.
I've already had a complaint about him and his poor work habits. Sleeps a lot, that guy.
Under a tree.
And he'll get a kick out when you walk in front of Town Hall. Everybody's walking there, they're stopping, and they literally stop and stare at it for minutes. It's a good thing. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Lauren, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. And thanks for the reminder of the meeting regarding the Westchester County Airport expansion. I heard on the radio yesterday that this past Labor Day weekend, that air travel exceeded pre-pandemic levels. So a lot of folks are getting out and about. It's exciting to be experiencing it after so long of a delay and postponements of really important events. Speaking of postponement of events, last night, attended the Board of Ethics meeting, and they were all in person. So it was just really nice to meet people for the first time that I had always seen on Zoom. You know, you never know who's going to be shorter or taller in person, so that's always a nice little chuckle. And got a chance to preview an agenda item that's going to come before us, the policy on recommendations and referrals from our various town departments. The other things that I've been working on primarily are the school building committees. So the GHS security vestibule, we are back at it and basically looking at how to resize the entrance. That's basically the change. I think most people are aware that when the bids came in, they were way more than we had anticipated. But we will keep things the same, the ability to enter the administration wing, you know, through outside without having to go into the school or the glass corridor, the security elements, the landscaping, which is extremely important to us and the environment, and certainly the neighborhood. And then this afternoon, for the Central Middle School Building Committee, we are walking through the school with architects. Our RFP went out for a, I was an owner's rep, I was going to say a cost estimator, but an owner's rep and the architects. So the architects that are interested in bidding on the project, they're going to walk through the building. So I'm excited about that, go through the halls of my old school.
Thank you. And that was a good meeting last night, the ethics part. I attended a few minutes late via Zoom, and I was the only one there. So it went pretty quickly. And I do want to thank them for taking up the referral policy, which is something that I asked them to do a few months ago because of, you know, the tricky situation where, you know, people ask us all the time about, you know, referrals, if we know anybody. And I know from my experience in Hartford, you're not supposed to do that. So I wanted to find out if that was, in fact, a practice in some of the departments. And in some cases, it is for a reason, so they clarified that. So we just wanted to make sure there's something clear and in writing there so people know what we can and can't do when it comes to referrals. And thanks, as far as the times for 9/11 events, it begins, begin gathering at 8:30 at Cosco Park, and that will go to about 10:20, I believe, and then at Glenville later that night, which is usually about 6:30. So two great ceremonies, so we'll look forward to seeing you all there. So thank you. And then we'll go on to old business, and we have the alternative route for the East Coast Greenery from Stanford through OG and Riverside, and it's the second read. Mike is here from DPW. Good morning, Mike.
Hi. For the record, Michael Kisleck with the Department of Public Works.
Sorry.
Got it, yeah. Sorry. For the record, Michael Kisleck with the Department of Public Works. So just to refresh everybody's memory, since we started this a couple weeks ago, we're looking for the Board of Selectmen as the Town Traffic Authority to endorse a change to the East Coast Greenway Route through Riverside and Old Greenwich. And then if and when we receive that, we'll take it to the East Coast Greenway Alliance, which is the nonprofit that maintains the route for their final approval. So the changes that we're looking to make are, well, we had three routes that we looked at, and then the proposed, the preferred alternative meets up with what Stanford is doing, changes the route from coming in at the Stanford border on Brown House, move it down to Shore Road, will come up Sound Beach Ave, turn left on West End Ave at the Firehouse in the town center there, and then continue on to Riverside, and then meet back up at US1 to tie into the existing route. So we left it open for public comment. We haven't received anything that I'm aware of, so kind of leave it at that. And then if we're here, if you have questions, I'm here with Amy, our DPW director, in case you guys have any questions.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. No, I did not receive any calls and protests, and my colleagues are saying they didn't either, so good job, and thank you. So I guess we'll be ready to endorse. Obviously, it's a final decision, it's not up to us, but we can certainly endorse it. Oh, thank you, Mike.
How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you, Selects. Wanted to say, just to be on the record, that I liked all three routes. I wonder if we want to have our own sign system for the other two as well. But one of the things I'm concerned about, I was going to--
Peter Alexander.
Oh, sorry. Peter Alexander, landscape architect, lifelong Greenwich formerly boy.
The man with the bow tie.
The Wellington Kennedy. I promised him I'd always wear one when I was working. But the speeding, especially, it just happens. I've been, I'm going to give you each a USB about what I'm presenting to FEMA about the flood last year. I just want to make sure you are aware of it. I'm not panhandling a referral, okay? But traffic calming speed bumps are difficult in a lot of ways for emergency responses and so forth. And there's a, it just happens, one of the slides from, you know, I started this project 12 years ago. I brought some attention, brought some attention to the neighborhood last year, but one of the things is the Caroline Road that goes really on a straight shot gets a lot of really high-speed traffic. And the speed bumps can be dangerous for emergency workers as a ski patrol and EMT. In Switzerland, what we have is one in one lane, and then 100 feet later, one in the other lane. So if the bad guys want to do the slalom, we'd like to say around the two things, really big, big fine. But in general, it really calms the--
And it would allow the emergency vehicles to--
And at the same time, slow down the people drying out their new cars.
Well, thank you. We could bring that up to gems and the police and fire and see what they say.
But not just there, but, you know, I should be more of a biker these days. I don't see much out there, bro.
It's certainly something--
Yeah, something we should consider for our bike route.
Okay.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, though, the bike route doesn't have any--
No, no, no. He was just suggesting as a possibility using Caroline as a, Caroline Place as an example. Thank you. Benny, morning, Ben.
Good morning. Vin DiMarco for the record. I'm currently the co-head, some people call it, of the Bicycle Task Force, and I want to confirm that we hadn't received any other comments about, negative or positive, about the change in the route in the East Coast Greenway. Personally, I think all routes are fine if people want to use them. However, it seemed to us, mostly the Bicycle Task Force people and pedal Greenwich, that the third route was more of a through route. The inner routes are more neighborhood kind of routes. And that's a point that I think shouldn't be taken too lightly because we need to figure out what a through really is and what a neighborhood, you know, what neighborhood route should look like. And the other point is that on that third route, it seemed to us that it was a little wider of a road and more possible to make more safety improvements on that route. So thank you. I'm glad we're going to be doing this, connecting with Stanford and keeping the Greenway. And in the future, maybe it raises awareness of the rest of the route in Greenwich where we need to make more changes or, you know, improvements. So I hope the discussion continues. We will continue the discussion in the task force and with the Stanford-Grenwich workforce, or whatever we're calling that task force. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ben. And just a quick question, so clarification. So the plan is actually to continue doing other routes to the border?
Oh, correct.
Yeah. So this is, this is just a part of that. So I like it, and for the reasons that you stated.
Yeah, I mean, you had initially thought that, okay, maybe we can improve the initial route that passes Rosa Harp and Park. That's not off the table. That could be, you know, a secondary route. But, you know, the East Coast Greenway, the, and I'm going to make a comment after the open space presentation, but the main purpose or the goal, the big goal of the Greenway is really to create a Greenway, which is a protected trail for all users, meaning all non-motorized users. So this is the on-road alternative, which is the only alternative we have pretty much through Fairfield County. But we should keep our sights there, you know, taking a look where we can make it more protected, more safe for everybody, you know, from the most vulnerable user to the, you know, to the road cyclist. So just got to bear that in mind, this is only a step, only trying to make it a little bit better now and more scenic, you know, more accessible and economically beneficial for the communities that it runs through.
Thanks, Ben. Okay. Seeing no other comments, is there a motion to endorse this route?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we endorse the alternative route for the East Coast Greenway from Stanford through Old Greenwich and Riverside.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Well, listen, favorite. Fred Camello's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate that. Success.
Yay.
Thank you. Okay. There'll be a lot of happy bikers and--
And walkers, and walkers.
And walkers, exactly. And then we go on to one of my favorite activities, which is hiking, and open space certainly has a lot to do with that. So Pat Sesto, our Environmental Affairs Director, is here with the Conservation Commission's 2022 Open Space Plan. Morning, Pat.
Thank you for adding us to your agenda. This is a presentation on our open space plan, the draft. We have affectionately, it's a reminders of how long things take. In my files, my digital files, this is labeled the Open Space 2020 Plan. So two years later, here we are. I'll throw in a bit of a COVID, but it's just remarkable how long these planning efforts actually take. But two years later, we are here, and we are ready to take to the town the presentation of our open space plan to help us move forward. It's equally important to think about what we do develop in town. We also have to think about what we don't want to develop. It's all part of that same matrix that guides how our town is going to look going forward. It's very weird to have the thing behind you, but. So the values of open space, why do we bother to think about what land we don't want to protect? Open space has ecological benefits. We think of it as sort of a nice thing to have, but it really is an area of our town that benefits us in many ways. We know from our flooding history, which is changing, that what we don't develop is really important in how we manage our stormwater. Large parcels of land with good vegetative cover hold that water. If there are wetlands or flat areas, those can stage our floods, floodwaters, and prevent damage downstream. We have pollution management. All that water that hangs out, the vegetation that gathers pollution, that again is another ecological service that the absence of development provides to our community. Climate change amelioration, one of Alex's favorite topics, is heat islands. And we know that vegetated land helps offset our concrete and roofs and our other hard landscape that holds heat. Our open spaces do not. So that again is another element to balance. And then, of course, habitat. We value the wildlife we have, whether it be our pollinators, our mammals, it's all part of our community, and we owe it to those individuals, those organisms, to have a place for them. And again, those species likewise support us in our developed areas. Most people think of passive recreation as why you would protect open space. And true, absolutely. We saw in COVID the importance of our open spaces, where people could go outside and safely see each other, get out of their homes. The numbers were dramatic, twice, more than twice the number of people. And depending where you are, it was multiples of that hitting our open spaces. That really cemented in a particular way acutely how important our open spaces are for us. We take for granted that they exist, but wow, we really needed them. Physical mental well-being, a lot of people getting out, getting away from our desks, from our children sometimes, getting to that peace of hearing the nature behind us. There's numerous studies that talk about the value of being in natural spaces to our physical and our mental well-being. Community values are enhanced. Traditionally, communities with larger open space dynamics in their town have higher property values. Properties that are closer to open space have higher values. So there is an enhanced value of attractiveness of a community when we have higher open space numbers. So the economics go from the macro on down to the individual property. And we have aesthetic rewards. We drive by any number of properties, and there's just that view shed that's just so pretty. It is part of that feel of our community that we embrace, whether it be your, we go by a historic home or an important architectural feature, and that gives us joy. We get that same joy from going by fields or forests or big view sheds that drop away from us. So open space or the absence of development provides that joy simply by passing by it. So a bit of background, our official open space plan is from 2002, so pretty old. Boy, lots have changed since that time. Land has gone by the wayside, for sure, but it's also, doesn't speak to 20 years later, what we want from our open space in the same lens as we would look at it today, perhaps. 2015, there was an effort by the Conservation Commission to revise that plan. This was before my time with the Commission, but my understanding is there were a few things, the approach of that plan didn't translate well, and it had set a goal of the town should have 21% of open space, even though we only have 19% left. So what did that mean? How would that be attainable? And the plan also included a goal of putting easements on town-owned land that acted as open space but wasn't protected as open space. We've not included those two factors in this plan. If those were the features that held us back, they're not so important that we need to fight that battle again. So we looked and we took an entirely different approach. And why does conservation, why did we take on this? Why isn't it some other entity, Parks and Rec, Planning and Zoning? It is actually a statutory charge of the Conservation Commission to inventory and manage our open space inventory. So that is what we did. It is a land use document, so we will be going to Planning and Zoning. The Planning Plan of Conservation and Development overtly states that we need to have a new open space plan, and the Commission, Conservation Commission, was charged with that task. So in short, what are our current standings? Right now, we have almost 3,900 acres of dedicated open space, and dedicated open space means land that people would traditionally consider dedicated, like it has an easement on it, or some other sort of form of restriction that prevents development. We also took that literal aspect of dedicated open space and expanded it to include land that either by way of acquisition or its apparent use was open space. So that includes places like Bruce Park. One could argue, because there's a lot of lawn, there's some amount of ball fields, that that shouldn't count as open space. It's not deed protected or deed restricted. So could the town change up its use? I suppose technically we could, but it was given way back in the early part of the 20th century as a town park. That was its original intent by the donor, and I think the town, in practical terms, would be very, would be one of poor precedent, but I don't think it is actually the intent of the town to try to overturn the original intention of how we came upon land. Binny Park, another one, just the same. It's a fairly intense passive recreational use, not deed restricted, but when the Binneys gave the property to the town, there was specific purpose behind it, and I don't see us deviating from that. So the point of whether there was an easement or not an easement, we took that into consideration, but then went further to expand that to include original intent, to see if something was, in fact, dedicated open space. Our 3,900 acres, that represents about 13% of the town acreage. Then we have another 1,871 acres that we consider unsecured open space. That's where, if you looked at it, it visually looks open, it's not developed, but there's no deed restriction associated with it, and there's no intent. These are generally privately owned parcels of land, so they might have the visual impact of open space, but they are, in fact, vulnerable to development. And then there was this middle category for us, golf courses and country club land. It's not, arguably, it's not intensively used, although the amount of lawn associated with it puts it in sort of a different category. They're different than ball fields because although they do have a singular use and there's a lot of lawn, it wouldn't take much for golf courses to go back to a more natural setting, but yet they are heavily managed. So we took those into account. We did not include them in our numbers. They're just there. They're in sort of this weird hybrid state. If we had a golf course or country club that was looking to dispose of their land, we would definitely raise our hand and say we want to be part of that conversation. But golf courses and country clubs were not taken into consideration in our overall evaluation of our open space. Thank you. How Greenwich compares, the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, WestCog is affectionately called, overall, our towns have an average of 17.5% of open space. Greenwich lags behind. We are looking closer to 7% by the numbers that WestCog has put together. I said before that we were closer to 13%. It's very important when you look at open space numbers from other towns and you look to compare, not all towns judge their open space equally. There is no one uniform standard of what's open space and what's not. We've already discussed the deed restriction aspect of open space or not open space ownership. So the message from here is we are not, despite the size of our town and our resources, we are not keeping up with our neighbors, so to speak. are not keeping up with our neighbors, so to speak, not keeping up with the Joneses. Even when you look at other towns that are similarly developed, like Fairfield or Westport, the coastal towns tend to have a higher degree of development, we still lag behind those. So even when you take out the new towns in Reddings, we're still not holding our own. Except for our recent protection of the Aquarian property, Greenwich has been pretty quiet for a long time in our open space preservation. And I say Greenwich in terms of the town of Greenwich, I do not want to include Land Trust, who has had successes in open space preservation, so they've been moving along. So that statement pertains to the town activity alone. So it's time to change. They're not making any more land, as they say. This gives you a visual of what our development patterns look like. They're pretty intense. And of no surprise, the post-road corridor, Greenwich Ave, Railroad I-95, that's where our greatest intensity of development is. And that historically, development starts in low and then it spreads out. You can see by the amount of green, we still have opportunities left to go, but those won't last forever. What was our foundational criteria? We did exclude certain land, as I said, we talked about the country clubs and golf courses, developed municipal property. So being a municipal property in and of itself did not put you on the list. Town, or spaces like this, we consider them developed. School properties, despite the fact that they've got a lot of green space with them, that green space has a relatively intensive use, ball fields primarily. So school properties, may that be private or public, ball fields not included, cemeteries. And that's one of those ones, when you look at us compared to other towns, some towns include cemeteries and ball fields, some towns don't. So understanding, again, going back, what is the criteria that we're comparing to is important. Generally, parcels under 10 acres were not included. They generally do not have a value due to their size. Open spaces like rice, the more of it, the better it is by in bulk. But there are some pieces that create connections to other existing open space or a different access point, or might provide an area for parking that a property desperately needs. So there are definitely exceptions where we found parcels under 10 acres that met a specific need and they were included. So undeveloped land over 10 acres was our first foundational criteria. We looked at underdeveloped land. Underdeveloped land is a pretty important category. If you had, say, a 30-acre parcel and it had one residence on it and it was in a four-acre zone, that land has the potential to hold more development and it has 24 acres roughly that aren't developed. So that's a big chunk of land. If we could work with those landowners to preserve their undeveloped portion and allow for that developed portion to continue, it potentially is a win-win, depending on what that family's needs are, but it's certainly a potential of open space for the town that can be meaningful. Managed undeveloped land, like I said before, Bruce and Binney, we counted those in as part of our inventory. And then reservoir property, despite the fact that it could be a long shot, that Aquarian is selling off their land. We did find that one Class III land that they do have the ability to sell off, but it's important to keep their land, that they have some of the biggest, most beautiful properties in town and they are probably one of our larger landholders, if not the largest. Sometimes parcels of open space do come about from water company land, whether they decommission a reservoir or they find excess land. So that land is vitally important. And it may come a time where buying an easement on it so it allows public access while we don't own it, that public access would be pretty important. So reservoir land vital to our town. So what was our methodology? Once we had this foundational criteria of what we were going to look at and what we weren't, we had to assign some methodology to what we were going to, how we were going to assess these properties. We had an in-house assessment via our GIS. We have wonderful GIS. It is, it's just fabulous to be able to work with, look at a map from an aerial view and get a clear assessment of what's going on and what potential a parcel might have. We have the ability to see wetlands, grades, outcrops, development, canopy cover. So that gives us a really good head start, but there's nothing quite like a field visit. So we did do an infield assessment. We sent letters to the properties that we suspected were in our top tier and to see if we could get permission to go on their properties, but otherwise did a drive-by. And since curbside appeal is one of our criteria, doing a drive-by also makes sense. We identified various attributes that are listed there, natural resources, connectivity, biodiversity, ecosystem health, recreational value, curb appeal, floodwater storage, maintenance burden and potential for development. Those were all identified on a scale of one to five and ranked. And then we took, since we had multiple people doing this, various sets of properties, we came together and you had to sort through the properties and challenge each other of why did you give that a five? Because I wasn't looking at mine with that being a five, so that we could, best as we could, normalize the assessments across the board. So a typical assessment would look like this. We would have the GIS of the property, we would have information pertaining to what's going on around it. Is there open space adjacent to it? If so, who owns it? The size of the parcel, did we think that public access was a reasonable expectation? Sometimes protecting land, even though it's not going to have good public access, still has value. Ledge, steep slopes were evaluated, wetlands. And then we discuss like which part of the property, in this case, it's an underdeveloped property, which part of the parcel would have the most develop, appeal? And then whether or not the development potential of that property was high or low. Interestingly, this one property is one of three that have since gone by the wayside since we started our study. So what were the results of our run-through? We had 133 parcels that made the list. Sometimes those parcels were a cluster under one ownership. By way of example, there's one up in the north end of Greenwich that I think it's, there's 13 parcels. Somebody owns effectively a subdivision, but those lot lines mean nothing as far from an ecological perspective, it's just a big chunk of land. So it's 133 parcels. 28 of those were given a ranking of five. The owners, again, by way of the original notice, have been notified that we think that their land has value to the town. And as I said, three parcels since we started have gone over to development. So the threat to losing this land is real. We, in the report, also speak about methods to protect open space. Not everybody is versed in the options. Most people think you're going to either buy it or somebody's going to give it to you. I don't think we get land donations the way we did back in the beginning of the 20th century, which is a shame, but you never know where things come from. Conservation easements, like I said, sometimes public access isn't the main goal. And having a conservation easement over land that prevents development might secure the resources and ecological functions of the parcel that are more important than public access. Public Access 490 is a tool that Greenwich has not yet adopted. That allows people with land on the open space plan to designate it as open space. It's a temporary hold, it's a 10-year commitment. And people will say, well, why do we want to give tax abatement, which is the purpose of the program, so that people can afford to hold on to their land rather being taxed at its potential use, they're taxed at its actual use, which is open space. So you're like, well, we're going to give somebody a 10-year buy on their taxes? That doesn't seem right. But 10 years of that land not being developed might allow us to budget resources out further so that when that family is ready to move on that parcel, we can be ready. It might allow us, knowing that that's a 10-year commitment, that we could focus our energy on something that needs more immediate attention. So there is value to the town, even with just a 10-year hold on a particular parcel. Similar vein of thought is first right of refusal. We know we really want a parcel, can we negotiate with that property owner to have first right of refusal? So before it goes to the market, can we talk to the town? Can we get that dialogue going and try to work out something outside of the free market? Bequests. Lots of times, people have land that they have raised their children on, they've raised their grandchildren, they want their children's children's children to have access to the land. Maybe the financial burden is not there or those subsequent generations don't live nearby. So if they have the ability to bequest that land, the town owns it, it's open to the public potentially, it's open to those subsequent generations to come back and say, this is where I was raised, this is the land that I love. Private-public partnerships, which we entered into with Land Trust, split the costs, mutual benefits. Limited or guided development, our land use regulations have conservation subdivisions, open space set-asides that help incrementally get to our goals. And those tools can be useful in connecting other open space or protecting perhaps the most valuable resources on that property. So it doesn't have to be a wholesale, buy it or lose it, public access, no public, there's all, it's a whole menu of options, depending on what our goals are for that particular property. So financing, big question. Boy, it is not cheap to buy land. We all know that. So how do we go about managing to finance it? We got very lucky with the Aquarian property, that it was to Aquarian's benefit, that this was a bargain sale. We had a partner with Land Trust and we had our own resources that collectively, we were able to be successful in retaining that parcel. Two of the parcels that were on our open space plan, those went for $36 million. $36 million. That's not a, hey Fred, can we talk? I've got something for us. That is something that we, as a town, have to commit, that we want certain parcels, we have to commit that it's going to cost and how are we going to strategize to meet those costs. Fees in lieu of open space would be one avenue, that you take the set aside from our subdivisions, which often end up in small pieces. There's a value to that land. Is it better to have that small piece than other small pieces dotted? Or is it more advantageous to take fees in lieu of that open space to start building a coffer? Property tax abatement might be a way to help open space stay as open space. Grants, we're always looking for grants. The state can make it a little tough on us, but we're dogging that fight just the same. Conveyance tax, that is a tool that is available to towns if they wish. I take that back, that is a limited, we still have more work at the state level to make that work, but it is something that municipalities should be sending the message up to the state that this would help us. And since the state has a 21% goal of open space preservation and the towns are supposed to shoulder 11% of that 21%, giving us all the tools possible to meet our part of that partnership would be important. And then the plain old budget line item. Should we be putting money into an open space account year in and year out so that when something of magnitude comes to us, we are in a position to act? So in conclusion, open space is a town, having more open space is a town goal. It's part of the POCD, it's supported overwhelmingly in public polls and feedback. This plan sets the stage for action, but it, of itself, is not action. The government, public landowners must be engaged for action to happen and we must have an action plan that is nimble. Again, things come on the market, we don't always get the heads up. We have to be in a position to be nimble and responsive. The values our community holds, which is our view sheds, our natural resources, our open space, whether they're public or not, these are values of our community. We want them to grow and if we don't have action, we will snuff out that potential. So that's it in a nutshell.
Well, thank you very much, Pat. That was very thorough. And I know you've done a lot of work on this. I will tell people that in the Aquarian land acquisition, you were instrumental in that for getting it at the price we got it with our partners, the Land Trust. So, and I agree with you, there are a lot of big pieces out there that, some of them are pretty well-known, that if they're developed, it will tax the town's infrastructure even more. We're in the middle of, in the middle, in the middle of hurricane season, but also a town-wide discussion about flooding and overdevelopment.
Yes.
And it turns out, a lot of things were built 50, 60, 70 years ago that really shouldn't have been, houses in valleys, but you really, the water has no place to go. And those people that, you know, put money in there, that's the biggest investment they ever had. But now, you know, if we buy one out to make a retention pond there, you gotta, you're gonna have to set a precedent. So we're up against it and I know when I speak to other mayors of First Select Men and Women around the state, they're having the same thing, the infrastructure is dated. It was never meant to have all this development. So I agree with you, it has to be a priority. And from the government's side, we have to, we have to commit to that. And I know there'll be pushback because it's, you know, it's nothing tangible, you're not going to see money coming back from this, but as you said, it does enhance values, it does enhance the quality of life here. And the town would be a very, very different town if certain places that we've acquired that are in that 4,000 acres of open space.
What if we didn't have Greenwich Point?
What if we didn't have Greenwich Point, which we got in 1947? Or you had that map there, right after, right after World War II, there was a big debate here in town about the then idea of a United Nations and they picked Greenwich, Connecticut in the back country, and Peter's shaking his head. And that would have taken out the back country, part of North Stanford, and I think a little bit of New Canaan. So just think of it, Greenwich, it wouldn't be the town we know. So if we want city life, we're surrounded by it and it's great, but I think people like the way we look, which is why we fight so hard against, you know, mandates from the state. That does not help this. So I appreciate it because it's very, very important.
So thank you, Pat. Just another, another opportunity to appreciate all your hard work. For the benefit of the audience, Pat and I co-chair the Greenwich Sustainability Committee. She is my partner in what I call all good things. So, so thank you for this. I definitely dug into it and appreciated all of the background. In particular, I'm very interested in the fees for, in lieu of open space. And I know that it would require an ordinance, which would have to come before us. So I'm, I'm just interested in looking to my colleagues and saying, you know, is this something we could pursue? Is this something, you know, is the next step for me to, I'm happy to ask Pat and our town administrator and our legal department to propose something to us so that we could consider it.
Yeah, planning and zoning.
And planning, planning and zoning, right. And that's the benefit of this, this conversation, right, to understand what the, what the next step would be. It sounds something like a land bank. I was chatting in, in an earlier conversation I've had with Will Keys of the Greenwich Land Trust, he was explaining how that would work and it sounds, you know, it sounds like that would be the model, that the money, monies raised from this fee in lieu of would then go into a special account, as would, you know, if we were to put budget money to go towards open land, similarly, it would go into that kind of an account. So that would be, that would be the question of how we would, how we would structure it.
And other towns do do this, so wouldn't be trailblazers on that account.
And just think about it, I mean, I noted on the, on the list of properties, and this is very timely, that Mead Point is, is high up there. And if we had been doing this for the past couple of decades, who knows, we, you know, maybe, maybe we could have purchased that property.
Good. Mead, 1141 King Street was one that went. And then Sherwood Ave is due to come in with a development.
Right. So that, so, yeah, I'd be very interested in pursuing this ordinance.
Yes, and I know what, it's not as easy as people think, when you, yeah, put that three-letter word in any proposal, it gets people's attentions, the conveyance tax. So, and I know I voted against a few of those for real estate when I was in Hartford. So we have to be careful of that too, but I know, as you said, being at the ready if something comes up. Do we know Darien's purchase of that island? How much was that?
I want to say it was 110 million.
170 million. Is that it? How, do we know how they're financing it? Because that's, it's very controversial, but it's a great piece of land and I don't know, I spoke with the First Select Woman the other day and she said it's not a done deal, but.
I don't know how Darien is approaching that, but I can say in my other, I've been fortunate to be involved in a few open space acquisitions and when there are, is existing development, you can carve that out and then the town can resell that portion and help bring back some money. So it can be a whole host of funding and mechanism. So it can be a whole host of funding and mechanisms that help pay for things.
Yeah, I'm just bringing that up because that could be a little bit of a blueprint. We all know of a couple huge properties that if we could just save half of it, it would be, and I also thought that we have about 800 acres of open space, I thought. Now you're saying 4,000, but there was, what was that 800 acres? What was that? That figure was thrown around when we got, when we got the Aquarians. They said it was posted, it was posted somewhere in the press. That's why I was confused when I saw the 4,000 acres.
So the 4,000 represents everybody's, regardless of who owns it. So Land Trust is thrown in there.
Oh, it could have been.
Even the private lands with easements on them would be part of that.
Is the distinct, the distinction, I think, is between open space versus protected open space. Is that, is that the distinction?
See, there, it depends on the document or the context in which it's being presented. Like I said, it would be so cool if there was standard nomenclature because we are all, you know, some people, when you say open space, they assume that means protected. And it doesn't necessarily. So I don't know the context in which yours would be.
No, I was just trying to help, I was just trying to help this conversation, but.
Yeah, the unprotected's not in that 4,000. So I think the, the property that just had three parcels sold off would be in that unprotected, vulnerable, open space area. So, but again, if you added other things, town properties, some of them in the golf courses, obviously it's not 100% protected, you know, going forward, but it gets us, it gives us that feel and look of a lot more green than is actually protected.
Yes.
But yeah.
Greenwich has 656, Town of Greenwich, 656 acres.
Okay.
So I have lots of different thoughts. Thanks for your awesome presentation and your presentation skills are phenomenal. I think you could probably teach presentation courses. And it wasn't lost on me on how long it took to put this plan together. And I know that we had pushback on the, the climate resolution when we said may versus shall, because of that, you know, knowing how long it takes to pull stuff together. So that wasn't lost on me. We are still working on the KPIs as they relate for the, relate to the P O C D and open space was definitely one of the KPIs. And it occurs to me, because I'm on the Affordable Housing Task Force, that, you know, we have our six guiding principles in the P O C D, but somewhere as a town, I think we need to prioritize what's most important. Because I think one of the things that people are looking at as we get these mandates from the state is look at our town-owned properties. And some people are looking at them from an open space perspective. So how do we develop affordable housing? And talk about nomenclature. People are conflating affordable housing with workforce housing. And that's not the same, you know, at all either. And I know that there's not money coming back. The way I look at this is it's insurance. It's an insurance policy. Because what we do today is going to save us money and heartache and destruction in the future. So, you know, that might be a way of presenting, you know, information. It's not about immediate money coming back. It's to prevent money going out in the future.
Very true.
So those were some of my thoughts, but again, thank you for an awesome presentation.
Right. So I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but I just wanted to clarify that the, that the ordinance we're talking about, the, the fees in lieu of open space, that's not a, that's not a tax. It's not, it's not coming from a conveyance tax. It's coming from, developers have the option because they're supposed to, new developments are supposed to set aside open space, which may or may not be of the same value as other open space, that instead of designating open space on a particular parcel, they could put funds into this, this special account, which the town then could use to, to purchase other.
The 15% set aside, open space set aside for subdivisions. If you have a 20-acre parcel, you know, that's not a lot of land. So you end up with a dot of open space. And that dot maybe has open space value, maybe not. But if it doesn't, then it behooves us to be able to take, you know, maybe it has better development potential than open space potential. So let's take that value and bank it so that we can buy land that does provide those ecological functions that we need, instead of having little things dotted around.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I think we have to make sure it's clarified because once it gets out there on, on Facebook that we're, we're proposing taxes on everybody. And then it's hard to pull it back sometimes. So, yeah, I agree. We have to make sure it's, we clarify that.
And the plan outlines, these are the tools that are available, that we need to look at to see what is appropriate for Greenwich, because they're all not going to be appropriate. And it may be fees in lieu, fine. Conveyance tax doesn't exist. And maybe for the reasons that you've had experience, we go like, no, that's not, we don't want to push that in Hartford because it's really not in our best interest. But these are the tools that we need to look at.
I agree. I mean, the developers, not bad people at all, but they're, and they deserve to make some money, but they're making money. And so it'd be a little bit of a payback to the town that's allowing them to do that while protecting the town. So I think that's really has to be at the heart of what we do. So I'm eager to continue this and to, to work on something on this board.
I have submitted to R T M and I, you know, they do love to see how boards have responded. If a vote is appropriate, I would love to have that. So I can go to the R T M and say that you guys support it.
So, yeah, I mean, it, we usually do a second read, but I'm.
That's fine.
I'm fine unless it's urgent.
I am on the call this month, but I don't expect, I would be shocked, the document like this, even though they don't have to do a second read because it's not an ordinance, I would be shocked that they didn't take more time. It's, which I'm going to say out of respect, this is an important document.
Yeah, and that's my point. That's my point. I just wanted to see if there's some feedback. I mean, I think we're all on board here, but I think, you know, we wanted to hear. Unless it was an urgent, urgent thing, I think we can, we'll vote on it in two weeks.
That's what I'd prefer. As a, as a best practice, I, I fully anticipate that I'm going to support this plan, but just as a best practice, I like having two reads.
Good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate that. Okay.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Vin DeMarco again for the record. Speaking under a different hat. This one? Is that it? Okay. Vin DeMarco for the record. Maybe, maybe it's the same hat. I was going to say I'm speaking under a different hat, but it could be the same thing. I just handed you just a little passage out of the introduction to the plan. And I'm bothered a little bit by the, by the phrase that, that open space will help alleviate traffic congestion. And maybe you can stretch to say that. But how, how do people actually get to open spaces? If you live nearby, okay, you may walk, you may bike to it and put your, put your bike there. But most of the time, if it's, if it's kids and families, they're not going to bike to the open space because it's not safe enough. So I'm going back, you know, it's kind of an interesting juxtaposition here between two different things, but they, but they both pertain to life in town, life in Greenwich and what, and the kinds of things that make Greenwich special. I am not advocating for putting bike trails in Myanna's River Park or, or in any other, any other places where it is going to be a detriment to the environment. I totally support the open space thing. Nothing more, more fun than, you know, having my grandkids walking through the park or through, through the woods with my grandkids. But, but something close to it was having to go to a, a trail in Westchester, a bike trail in Westchester. My eight-year-old granddaughter in front on her own and my four-year-old behind me on a bike yelling to me, "Pah, I just saw a platypus." So, I mean, you know, these are wonderful kinds of things and I don't see that we should close our eyes to the, to the bikability in town, which really does, could help to alleviate traffic congestion and, and, you know, give us so many other benefits. So in support of this plan, of the open space plan, I would just be careful about that one phrase in there. Maybe that's something that should be clarified. Put an asterisk and explain it at the bottom or something because it, it is an issue. But in support of the plan, I, I would, I would hate to see that we concentrate heavily on this and, you know, do a land bank or whatever. What do we do to try to fund this? And we, and we continue not to put resources towards bicycling or, or other human-powered transportation that really would benefit the town as well. That's my only comment.
Thanks, Vin. But, I mean, hiking is a human activity.
Absolutely.
And biking is a little bit tougher, as you know, because they're out there with, with vehicles that can kill. And this, this has benefits, as you heard, of, of not only, you know, creating great vistas, but, you know, helping with the flood issue. And you live in an area that gets flooded all the time.
Of course.
That's been overdeveloped. And so I, I wouldn't equate it with biking. I mean, it's two different things.
Well, no, it is. There's no question. But what I'm, what I'm, I guess the point I'm driving at is here's open space. We're, you know, we're dealing with open space where we can have passive recreation and saving the environment and, you know, doing all those things for nature as well as for people. That's great. And here we have our roadway system where people drive cars primarily because it's not safe enough to have a bicycle. The East Coast Greenway, you know, comparing that kind of a thing, that is meant to be a protected trail from Florida to Maine. And in a lot of places in, you know, along the route, and even in Connecticut, in Upper Connecticut, they have trails going through their, through their towns. They're not necessarily through a big open space park, but they created space for those trails. That's, that's the point I'm making is that, hey, open space, great. Let's, let's grab as much as we can. Let's preserve as much as we can. But at the same time, let's not lose sight of the fact that, that there's something else really beneficial that Greenwich does not have.
Right. But a lot of those town places that you mentioned have very wide roads and they're not as developed.
Understood. It's hard.
And I know what you're saying because it's beautiful to see when you're going to a place and there's actually, the roads are so wide and there's a beautiful bike path there and they're, and people look healthy and they're happy and they're, right? There's less cars on the road because the people can bike. We've run into that problem because we border right up against private property a lot of the times and it's.
Absolutely. However, we do, and one more point, we're doing bike rodeos or bike clinics, right? And they're wonderful. Janet was at the last one at the Cosco Library. And, and the very first thing that parents come, come up to us after the rodeo say, wow, this is really great and wonderful. Where can we ride? You know, Greenwich Point is about it. So, you know, it's a, it's a really difficult thing. And so I understand, you know, the issue is, there's no question about it. We have, we have narrow roads. However, remember how much pushback. We, we are known as the worst town that the Greenway came to in trying to develop the Mary Park Way Trail. And that's not taking people's properties.
When you looked at Bruce Park then, and we did that a few years ago, we did the paths going through there. And we do walks through there all the time. Have you ever considered on our hiking trails, whether it's Bruce Park or Montgomery, Piney Autumn or whatever, doing a path? You know, you have the hiking path for the, for the people hiking, but one right next to it for the bikes.
Yeah. In fact, 20 years ago, I don't think you were on the Parks and Rec Board at the time, but there was a proposal, Greenwich Safe Cycling, Franklin Blumer came with a proposal to, to the Parks and Rec Board and said, look, there's one, we, we mapped out a 1.2-mile trail through Piney Autumn. In Piney Autumn, it's already existing. There was one little stretch where we'd have to build a little wooden bridge over, over wetlands. Nope. Turned it down.
Can, can you bring it back?
Just as an example.
Yeah, bring it back again because I think that there, there's built-in opportunities there and you're not really creating impervious space. I mean, it's not a lot and you could actually.
It's already there.
Yeah, you could actually, you know, it could be a dirt road, whatever.
It has to be strictly enforced, obviously. We all know that. But yes, we could bring that back, of course.
I like, I like, I like that idea because there, if we're doing it for the hikers and there's a path there, they're not that big, having one for bikers wherever.
Yeah, we're envisioning, really, we're, we're not envisioning a dirt trail, really. It's, it's already paved pretty much all over. But it's, it's a way where young children can go.
Well, you can make, if there's, if there's a path that's already paved, which I'm not an advocate for, then make that for the bikes and then just do the dirt path.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah.
I'm all for that. If you, if you want to put together a plan.
We can bring it back, of course.
We could look at all of the, the parks and see.
Yeah, we'll bring that up in the task force.
And that's my point about like thinking of stuff in silos, you know, affordable housing, open space, bike paths. I mean, it's got to be thought of.
Yes, you're right.
I can't think of the word, but holistically. Like how do all the pieces fit together rather than, let me solve this problem, let me solve this problem, let me solve this problem, and they all overlap?
Yes, it's true. Anyway, we'll be, we'll be discussing another, another policy type thing, hopefully soon called Complete Streets. You've all heard of it. You all know, you know, what, you know, bump outs or a sort of portion of the Complete Streets thing. That's what you're talking about, yeah. Let's bring everybody together and say, what do we, you know, what are we trying, what are our goals here? Yeah. To make the ground better.
I like that because that's, that, we always say hiking is so much safer than biking, but if, if we have those paths already, why not incorporate them where they could be side by side, separated, but side by side? So they could, the bikers can do the same thing. Because I know when I used to hike a lot at, up in CogniWog, it didn't bother me, but there was a lot of bikers there and I know some people didn't like that because they're, but it never bothered me because I thought they had a right to be there too.
Well, they do a lot of damage to dirt trails. We all know that.
Yeah. But again, I know there's, it's pushback. I never, it never bothered me only because, again, I thought they had a right to be there. So if we can do something like that, I think it's a, it's a built-in solution.
Okay. I mean.
And in the interest of involving community partners, and I know Fred will join me in this, the, the little bridge you talked about necessary to complete this bike trail, depending on the bridge, that's an ideal Eagle project.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you for, thank you for the discussion.
Good work on that. All right. Thanks, Vin. Okay. We're going on to the next item.
Yeah, it's our amended item. So on the 22nd, I actually am a board member of Kerma and they have a meeting that day. So Kerma is the Connecticut Interlocal Risk Management Agency. And I have to drive all the way up to New Haven. So I was hoping that we can reschedule our meeting. It's also Westcog meeting that day as well. So it's actually two conflicts. And then hearing what we're going to be doing for our little guy out there, our little farmer, maybe the 21st, if that works for you guys? If that's at noon, maybe we can meet.
I'd have to check. I'd have to check. I mean, if you, have you checked the calendar? Because I don't know.
I haven't checked your guys' calendars.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could actually, an executive session and then come out and vote.
Okay.
I'm happy to do that. Obviously, obviously Fred, you know, we need, we need Fred. I'll point out, just because of the, the vagaries of the way the calendar works, I've already been looking at this, we have a fifth Thursday in September. So I don't know if that works, but we could, we could simply just.
What day is that?
The 20, 29th.
Okay, let's talk about, I mean, that'll be a quick discussion, once we look at the calendar and then we can come out and vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, no votes or anything else? Okay, I don't see any other business.
I do have one nomination.
Okay.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Erica Maurizio as a new alternate member, position A1, to the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency for a term expiring October 31st, 2024.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Well, those are in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And we're going to sign off. I see, I saw one hand in the back there. Final word.
Yeah, I wanted to.
Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Peter Alexander. Landscape architect.
Yeah, I wanted to.
Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Peter Alexander. Landscape architect.
I'll hit it again. I'm sorry.
Hit it again, yeah. Turned it off. How's that? I'm still Peter Alexander, landscape architect. The 200th birthday year of Frederick Law Olmsted, who was really instrumental in creating landscape architect as a form of profession here in the U.S. is, one of the guys, names is on the wall up there. We're trying to use the first town hall as a place for a birthday party for him right around September 22nd. I wanted to just make you aware of that. He had an impact on the town. Jeff Mead's putting it, putting it together. Let's see, like, they call it the senior center now. And it's really exciting. And I also wanted to inform you that these, this is the report I'm giving to FEMA. I'm not asking for your endorsement. I just want to give you the information so you can take a look at it.